Okay, so welcome to the August 13th Public Safety Subcommittee Meeting. We have three items on the agenda. I think we'll just, I don't have my agenda with me, but we'll just go in the order that I have to have them on my paper here. So the first one, and we have Chief Ekman here representing the Police Department of Public Safety, and Counselor Hagan with us. I was just for a minute. And I'm Joe McCoy. So the first one is a request from the Goraska Builders was interested in having a stop sign at the Paul Street Extension, which is a proposed name of Gillian's Way. They have a brief history that October 19th, 2011, East Hampton Planning Board approved the Gillian Estates as an open space residential subdivision. The subdivision includes nine lots of single families homeless surrounding protected open spaces. As of this date, no homes have been constructed on this development, as well as currently under construction. They said one of the conditions of approval of the estate subdivision by the planning board per letter dated October 19th is the Alkens Hill. Initiate the process with the City Council of the placement of a stop sign at the corner of Paul Streets and Beechwood Avenue. So this request was sent to Public Safety and also the City Engineer. We have City Engineers' response here, which I can get to later, but since we have the Chief of Police here, do you want to summarize what your findings were?
Absolutely, yeah. I actually spoke to Jim Gracia about this issue. We both physically went down, got out, walked around that area, and we do not see any need for it. What I did is I went down into that area only, and this is only on the south side of, I'm south side, the west side of South Street. And you have intersections at South and Beechwood. There is no stop sign there. Cedarwood and Beechwood, no stop sign there. Beechwood and Paul, no stop sign. Sheldon and Paul, no stop sign.
Downstairs, Planning Board.
Okay.
Thanks.
Cedarwood and Sheldon, no stop sign. Carroll and Paul, no stop sign. Carroll and South, no stop sign. Ranch and South, no stop sign. The only street that has a stop sign is Sheldon and South, in that whole area, that whole subdivision in there. And the street in question, if you go down that street, it is very obvious that you can't continue on. You have to stop. You're looking right at a house directly in front of you. The new project that is proposed is being built, I'm guessing about 150 yards north. So there's going to be minimal traffic impact. Again, none of the other cross streets have stop signs. So we both agree, we do not see a need for a stop sign at that intersection at all.
Counsel Hagan, I know you, as I said, I didn't have a chance to look at the intersection myself. Did you feel the same way, or what was your impression?
Well, I did take a ride down there, and I thought that they wanted it not at Beechwood.
My understanding was Beechwood and Paul.
And Paul, right, which is on the inside. And that's where they, Paul Street Extension is where they're building the houses.
Right.
And there is a couple of houses, I would say, on Beechwood that are kind of right at the intersection here. This house.
Yeah.
We'll give this house here. This is Beechwood comes in on-
Yeah, Beechwood comes in-
On South Street.
Right. Now, this is the new subdivision-
And this is the new subdivision in here.
Yeah. There's a street, or there's a home that's right across here, right here, and there's a couple that are right down here and right here.
Kind of a big maple.
And one here. Again, it's very evident that you don't, you have to come to a stop here, but every other, every other street in this whole neighborhood are without stop signs.
Garfield and Hisgin, yes.
No, this isn't Garfield, this is Paul.
Oh, Paul, this is the one I'm here for.
My only, my only concern is, I talked to the planner last night, I was at a different hearing, and the planner, there was two issues that came up. One, they're going to name this Gillian Way, so if we did put it in, I think we would have to make sure that the wording was different. But it seems the Chief doesn't necessarily recommend it, and I understand what he's saying. My only other concern is, what I happened to be at was the Conservation Commission last night, and they are putting a trail in here. And I'm not sure where that's going to be. They're going to put a trail all the way as part of the land we gave them by the river. It's going to be like several miles, like three miles in.
Yeah.
And they were talking about, one of the, some of these residents were here, and nobody mentioned a stop sign, but in talking about the trail, they kept asking the people where parking was going to be for the trail, and they said, "Well, we didn't think most people would bring a car," which I didn't really understand. I thought it would be a, you know-
Oh, like mostly neighborhood people walking their dog.
Right. But I mean, this is going to go all the way to the old Pomeroy thing, which is almost itself-happy, and you're going to be able to go all along the-
Sure. The whole Manhattan.
And I'm just not sure if we shouldn't at least find out where, if that would impact a stop sign. In other words, if they're going to put, I don't know.
Parking.
I didn't have time because-
I can't see where there'd be any parking.
Yeah, they said there really was very little. Where the trail went in, they owned some land, they didn't know if they would put any parking. And I was thinking of Chink Street, the problem we had there, because if, again, it may have nothing to do with a stop sign, but I could see coming down the road is possibly, if people start parking along Beechwood or Paul, they're going to have parking problems, or parking, do you have a better map?
I'm just going to, this is not a better map at all, but this is just bigger. So we're talking, this is, where are we here?
Year four, so it's in here.
Yeah, it's in mine. So here's South Street.
Yeah.
And-
This is what street, you've got to find Sheldon, if you can find Sheldon, it's pretty easy to pick up.
Oh, it's over, it should be over.
Should be going.
Oh, here we go, here it is. This neighborhood, so like-
So what's at the end?
Here's Paul.
Okay, Paul Street, and this, this-
And see all those developments back? That's all accessed from Route 10, these developments.
Right. So it's going to be in this area, and that trail is going to go all the way like this way, all the way along the river, you know, with several-
I think most people from my, if I'm correct, I think the entrance is going to be off Ranch. I think the parking's going to be over off Ranch.
Ranch is the cul-de-sac, the next one down.
Yeah.
That's a cul-de-sac.
Okay, so then it's, that could be true.
And there's nothing that connects it over Beechwood or Paul, so-
So that should be a problem.
That should be an issue, yeah.
So we may have anything, have a problem at Ranch. If, I just think they were minimizing, and again, I'm certainly for the trail, and I think they're going to put it in and everything, and it was just one of the neighborhoods, I think people are going to come to-
Problem.
I mean, after hearing the kind of what it's going to do and some steps and stuff, I was kind of interested, they're going to have platforms over the river, you know, it sounded kind of neat, I'd say, dude, I'd drive over, certainly not walking, I guess maybe I should bike from my house, but, but it's not going to be able to load mountain bikes.
That's what they said?
Yeah. They're going to do it, they're going to put all these steps, they're going to put steps on so that, well, I guess you could carry all of the steps.
I'd just ride.
Or jump over, go up on like, and stuff. I know, I remember the police used to go down the mountain road.
Absolutely.
So, okay, that was my more concern. If it's going to be on Ranch, then I know, I understand.
I think it's going to be Ranch, from my understanding.
And I also asked the planner if she knew what, why the planning board ever put it in the conditions, and she really didn't know, because she wasn't the planner at the time. She said the only ones that would probably be there would be Check or Harry.
Right.
And I guess it's the part of the developer has, you know, he's just trying to meet the conditions of the-
Right. And I think by requesting, he may fulfill those conditions.
He's meeting the conditions, just a matter of meeting the conditions of-
Yeah. So, but I just, from a perspective, whatever you have a street that you could either turn left or right on, don't you almost need to have some sort of stop sign? Because let's say a car is coming down, it will be Gillian Way, and no one has to stop.
Right. Well, if you look, if you go through East Hampton, and you drive most of the streets and most of the side streets, I would say 75% do not have stop signs.
Okay.
And what the rules of the road are, if you come to an intersecting way, and you know, there's the main thoroughfare going through, it's your responsibility to stop. It's just like the vast majority of streets in East Hampton or anywhere-
Right.
Don't have speed limit signs.
Right.
But it's 30 miles an hour in a thickly settled area, you know, for an acre mile, things like that. So it's pretty much the rules, the rules of the road.
Yeah.
I would look at a stop sign where it's needed, is if you're coming onto really a main thoroughfare, and there's, it's absolutely not obvious that you need to stop.
Right.
And there'd be any question. This particular location, anybody driving down that street for the first time would know, I've got to stop.
Yeah.
You've got mailboxes in front of you, you've got a house, you've got a tree, you know you're coming to an intersecting way.
Yeah. I guess you're right. I guess you forget when you're driving that you just instinctively stop at, not realizing there's not a stop sign there.
Right.
Okay. If I pull out of my street, there's no stop sign.
No.
It must be a terrace, you know?
Right.
It's a big bush, so I can't see anything, but-
No stop sign.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion on this, since we have the, we also, as I said, the email from the city planner, I'm sorry, engineer, who said, you know, he also does not think a stop sign is a border of this location. So I guess, accept a motion to, oh, no, yeah, accept a motion to have it removed from the agenda without prejudice then, since, or do we wish we vote?
No, I think we could, should remove it without prejudice, because then once the development comes in, if, you know, they start seeing a problem, or neighbors come up with a problem, we can bring it back within, in the six months, a couple of months or now.
Right.
Leave it without prejudice, see how it goes with the, because I think until he, again, just listening with the planners last night, until he meets all his conditions, he can't start constructing the home. So I think once we start getting some cars moving through there, if it becomes a problem, we can look at that. So, I'll make a motion that we have the request for a stop sign at Paul Street Extension to be named in the future, Gillian's Way in Birch, what is it? Birchwood Avenue, removed from the agenda without prejudice.
Second at?
Beechwood.
Beechwood.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Two zero, okay. I'm wondering if maybe just for legality, I'll see if, I'll write up a letter to send to them saying, as far as the City Council is concerned, you have met the requirement-
Right. To request, to request a sign, and we at this point have just-
Right.
Continue without prejudice. Remove it from our agenda without prejudice.
Okay, since we have Counselor Derby here, why don't we move on to Garfield?
So, a little history for you guys. I was contacted by a particular resident, who I think I've contacted Bruce multiple times, basically concerned about the speed of vehicles. And when I went down there and did my, my kind of reconnaissance, I realized that I think that there's been an increase in traffic there because of the high school, the cut through. It seems like there was a little bit more traffic. Didn't necessarily seem like it was going all that fast to me. However, because I'm kind of, well, especially, I've been spending a lot of time down there this summer, I've probably gone through that intersection at least once a day, probably twice a day for the last month and a half. What I've found is, there's a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic going from the park to the bike path. It seems like there's a lot of little kids, and there's a lot of families, and that is what actually spurred me to say, you know what, it would make sense to put a, because one street up is a stop going towards the new high school. There's a stop sign, and it's free traffic on Hisgin. But when you get to Garfield, it's a stop sign on Garfield, because Garfield's a little bit more of a main thoroughfare. And it seems like it would make sense to have cars at least stop to look for pedestrians, because the Wilson kids use that to go to the fields a lot. The world, you know, recently the World Sports Camp has been using it, so there's lots and lots of pedestrian traffic there. And so when I thought about it, it seemed like it was not a bad idea. And, I tried to be creative, and we'll see what happens, but, you know, this, Wilson has a vested interest here, and we don't have a lot of money, so if we did decide to go with a stop sign, you know, I think it would be worth our while to approach Wilson to see if they, you know, donate stop sign, and maybe even repaint the crosswalk there, since it affects them so greatly. Maybe they would consider that a partnership plan. Anyway, and I also think it addresses the concerns of the neighbors, who, the woman who was fairly active in addressing this, got, you know, pretty much all of her neighbors on board. So I was receiving phone calls and letters of support, quite a few. So it seems like the neighborhood is interested in having some sort of measure to, and a stop sign, I mean, honestly, is going to slow people down, because you can get a decent, you go down the little hill, get a decent little clip going, but, I mean, I know that the empirical evidence doesn't necessarily support that people are speeding on the street, but when you have a stop sign, it will definitely, unless you have people that are like racing off the mark.
So they're looking, I'm sorry, no, no, go ahead. So they're looking for a stop sign at, is it?
Hisgin and Garfield.
And Garfield, not Gar, so it won't be a four-way, right?
So, well, there is already-
One coming on to Garfield?
So when you are going down Hisgin-
You've got to stop.
You've got to stop.
Now they want one on Garfield.
So that way, it would be a four-way stop, because, and you know, it's kind of a shortcut. It's a shortcut to get to the park.
Right.
It's a shortcut to get to the high school. It's also a shortcut into town. And then there's the street below it, which, oh, God.
Ward Avenue.
That one does not have any stop signs on it, so that one, you know, if people were looking to go on a stop sign-free street, it'd have an option. You know, which, again, is still heavily populated, still has the traffic, but, you know, it's not a cross street. So, that's my, you know, honestly, when I first heard it, I was like, whatever, I mean, as a driver, don't want a stop sign. But as I started using it more as a pedestrian, it felt like it was, it made sense, because you're on, I don't want to get too long into here, but on Hisgin side, it's a little hill down. So, one of the main, one of the epiphany moments was I was riding, we had been at the pool, I had my kids with me on their bikes, and I had a couple of their friends, and they're, one of my basketball players, he's going down, no hands standing up going down Hisgin. I'm like freaking out, and I'm like, stop, 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 stop! And you know, he puts on his brakes just as he's getting into the intersection, you know, like, thankfully, no car's coming. And I had to yell at him and call his parents, so it was, I figured like, you know. So that's my spiel, I don't know what you guys have gotten, other than-
My table, first, I want to thank the Chief for the-
I've got more information for you.
Okay. Well, maybe you want to give your information first.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Just to bring everybody up to speed, after receiving numerous complaints from residents in Garfield, we actually did a speed study. We went out there over the course of about 10 days, and I'm not going to belabor the issue, we go down, cover every single one, but we did find that the average speed on the street after counting 289 cars, the average speed was 28.57 miles an hour. That's about a mile and a half, a mile an hour would be below the actual speed limit. The high speed recorded on the street was 44 miles an hour, and another violation was a car coming out of Hisgin that ran to the stop sign. And those, those people were both cited. The only accident that we've had at that intersection in five and a half years was in 2008. Accident report 08199, it was on October 3rd. A bicyclist failed to stop for the sign on Hisgin and went into the roadway and was struck by a vehicle.
Somebody on Garfield Avenue.
Now, one of the things I'd like to pass up to the council, and I only made two copies, I apologize, you can certainly make copies of this, is, we're here. U.S. Department of Transportation came out, I share whatever, however you want to do it. U.S. Department of Transportation came out, and a federal agency, about frequently asked questions with stop signs and having stop signs and going to four-way stop signs at intersections. And you can read it all over, the information is there, but basically what the findings are, is stop signs, number one, don't always slow traffic, four-way stop signs. And number two, installing four-way stop signs actually can do more harm than good. And it gives you all the reasons, it gives you all of the studies, and it says stop signs overuse where they're located, it causes drivers to speed up after they come to a stop, accelerating rapidly, that in a new intersection like that, if you put stop signs on Garfield Avenue, are one of our most dangerous intersections in all of East Hampton, is a four-way stop sign intersection, Center Street and Park Street. We have more accidents there than almost anywhere else, because when people do come to the sign, who's going to have the right of way? It should be the car on the right, but it always doesn't work that way. And then you get the occasional person that comes through the area, does not see the stop sign. And looking at Garfield Avenue, it's a fairly wide road, and in that particular area, you have cars that are parked, especially traveling in a westerly direction. They park on the north side of Garfield Avenue, and I drove down that street three times today, looking at that particular location. It's going to be awful hard to see a seat, any type of stop sign there. And my fear is, is you're going to get someone that comes up to Hisgin Avenue and feels that there's a stop sign over there, I have the right of way, I was here first, and have somebody blow right through that stop sign and T-bone. That's what my fear is on a four-way stop sign. I'm not a big fan of four-way stop signs for these particular reasons, but I did find this in the Department of Transportation's website, and, you know, that's really, that's my opinion. I didn't find that there was a speeding issue. We had officers up there every day, and just covered every shift. And if you see on one of the shifts, they had Officer Rivera up there, he got there 2:00 in the morning, because I was told that cars are doing that all night. He was there 2:00 in the morning till 2:30 in the morning, not one car passed him. And he just sat there, just, nobody passed him at all. So we covered the school times, we covered every time, and the speed limit was actually below the posted speed limit, that that were people who were traveling at. So I didn't really see, I think a lot of it has to do with people's perception, and having done this for years, 34 years now, there's been many times we've been out in a cruiser, and we will have a radar unit with us, especially a larger vehicle, and we will ask the person, what do you think that car is doing? And they'll generally say 45 to 50, and in reality, the truck's doing probably 28 to 30. So, I mean, there's a lot with perception. We run radar on every single street in the city, we'll continue to run it on Garfield Avenue, but Garfield Avenue, I just ran the statistics for the last, since January 1st, we've only issued three citations on Garfield Avenue, and they've been running it quite a bit down there. So we're not running into that speeding problem.
I mean, I guess I kind of feel the speeding aspect of it's pretty well documented, but you, you know, the issue that Counsel Derby brought up as far as the safety for pedestrians, you still, with this information, even from that perspective, you think walkers and citizens in general would be safer with it remaining the way it is?
What I would ask you to do, is I would ask you to read the information. I notice a lot of information there. I would ask the counselors to read that before, you know, making a decision on it, just to get a well-informed background. And again, this comes directly from the Department of Transportation, you can go to their website, and they advocate against having a four-way stop sign. And I'm, I just got this today, I just printed it out because of the issue. And I have to be honest, I'm not really sold on a four-way stop sign. The areas where they are, I think we tend to see more accidents, but that might be due to the fact that it's a much busier street too, you know? I don't know. I just, I'm in fear that if something does go up, you're going to have that person that's going to feel that they still have the right of way, or they forgot that the stop sign was there, and the other person coming out of Hisgin Avenue, where there's always been a stop sign, and now we're going to have a major accident. That, that's just my fear.
Well, I'm sorry, just a couple of comments, I started to say, I appreciate the time your officers put in, thank you, monitoring the speed. I guess what I was going to suggest, and I know it was right at the end of the school year, and maybe this fits in with it, because certainly I want to read what this is and continue it, I think, at least to get this. And I'm not trying to put any more work on your department, especially as the fall comes. But I think it would be, it might be informational for us, because it would also address some of Counsel Derby's concerns of, maybe once school starts up again, and it's kind of the nice weather when the fields are going to be utilized in September, that if some officers are down there and are not only monitoring the speed, but kind of getting a look at, is there increased foot traffic out of the high school now because of where it is? In other words, are more kids coming out of the back that are going down? Is there increased foot traffic? Is there increased bike traffic? Is more kids coming and going from the parks? And I think September would be a good, a good time for that, because I think it's the prime soccer-
Sure.
Lacrosse, all that type of stuff that's going to go on. So, I mean, I guess that would be my thing, is to put it off until the early fall here and read this, and if, you know, again, I know it's not, can't be your everyday priority, but if a few times during the school year, especially, I certainly, especially I think around that-
Right.
Maybe early morning, but more so that afternoon, when I think a lot of kids will be coming out, Williston kids are going to the fields-
Sure.
East Hampton kids are going to the fields.
Yeah.
Parents are going to the fields, and parents are going to, not a tough park.
If I may, you know, I have no vested interest, obviously. My whole thing is to provide you with the information that is pertinent, you know, to this, this subject, and say, okay, here's what we did for a speed study, and here's what I find for the stop signs. If you voted to say we're putting in stop signs, fine, we'll enforce it. I have no, no problem either way, but I'm just telling you, you know, what I found and then what my opinion is of a four-way stop sign, and I think that they do pose problems, so-
And that's why I said I definitely would like to read this too-
Yeah, please read that.
Because, you know, obviously, it's not something you can read that just right now.
Absolutely not.
It's a good, I think it is a good point, because now that the high school, that back entrance has a little bit more, it's a, that's the entrance now?
Mm-hmm.
You might find more kids coming out of that entrance and going down to the bike path. So, I mean, who knows?
Yeah.
I mean, even, like, for me, I don't care, I honestly, I don't honestly care about the stop sign either, whatever, but my concern is the increase in traffic-
Sure.
-pedestrians and bikers.
It's not fair, I also mean-
Yeah. And everybody, and that's, if, I mean, even if it's just us getting the DPW to lay down new crosswalks there, you know?
Absolutely.
And maybe putting up like a pedestrian sign, or, you know, one of those, those ones that goes in the middle, it says, "Stay fine, stop for pedestrian," that kind of thing.
Might be an alternative.
Any of those things, I'm okay with. I just, at first, I was apprehensive to bring it forward. And once I spent a little time there, I was like, seems like something could, you know, like that person who got T-boned on the bike. I saw my player go right out on the street, and like, if there was a car coming, he would have gotten it. So I was like, ooh, maybe a stop sign's not bad.
That's what my fear is, that's what my fear is. For the first, I want to say for the first two years at Center and Park, when the stop signs went in on Park Street, because it only used to be on Center Street, we were having accidents every single week, because you get so many people, that I didn't see, I traveled this road every single day, I didn't realize they were up. And they blow right through it. I'll be honest.
They're on autopilot.
I did it myself.
Yeah.
You know, it scares you, you want, what they just do, you know? Because you're so used to driving that way, you do go right through it, and it's, it's got a lot of accidents.
That's true, for sure. And my other concern is, you know, I believe that you're right, the cars are parked, and if there was one in the corner, it's going to be hard to see it.
Hard to see.
So, you know, I think you guys should go, I mean, it's right there. Take a look at it.
I've driven that a lot, especially since this. In fact, sometimes I cut out, especially with the bridge.
Right, right.
It's like, O'Neil is so rough.
Yeah.
It's actually a better ride knowing I'll leave a meeting to go up there, and then I'll go to Garfield, because I always look at the high schools, and I always tell the little for the neighbors there.
Sure.
And then I go, you know, so when we had this, I've been up there several times.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean-
I'm very familiar with it, I just-
The good news is, like almost, like I said, I ride, because I ride my kids to the pool pretty much every day, that's what we do in the summer. Most of the time, there's not really, it's not a high traffic area. You know, so I think it would be a different dynamic than the Park, Center, stop, four-way, but you know, figure it out. As long as you guys do a good look.
So Bruce, is that something that you would be willing to do, just look again? And again, not necessarily-
Absolutely.
Maybe a little bit of speed, but also just pedestrians?
Kind of gauge how they're-
We'll do all of the above, that's not a problem. What we did when we thought that there was an issue, after I spoke to Salem, that it's like, okay, I'm going to put somebody down there and do a speed study, and then I'm going to take all officers, different times, and make sure you get there averaged about every hour, and it's half an hour. If I stick somebody down there for half an hour, as part of their patrol, they come up with a report, it's not a big deal to do something like that.
Okay, then they may, well, maybe we address this in October.
Yeah, and October, give it a month for your officers to-
And also is it-
And then maybe even, you know, you or your other traffic depot can even come up with some alternatives.
Absolutely.
If you think there's safer alternatives.
Is it your department who would deal with crosswalks or pedestrian signs, or is it public works?
Public works.
They would put them in, but you could give us a recommendation.
We'd give you a recommendation that you should put in, you know, additional crosswalks here, there, or wherever else. And then you would, you would do that and then we'd, it would be addressed through public works and you would put down-
So that obviously would be helpful, is if looking at, you said, yeah, we could do a repaint it or is-
Yeah.
Salem said one of those songs.
Yeah, I'm all for crosswalks, I have no problem with that because crosswalks you can actually see, they're in the road and you can see them. But stop signs become very obscure and off to the side of the road, especially in that area. I just don't like the placement of signs there. And when short of putting a red light in the middle of the road, which would cost, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars-
We'll do that on South Street in 10.
It's not going to happen, yeah.
Because I, sitting here, you know, when you said drive it, I've been sitting here visualizing and I can't visualize these, the crosswalks. They're very dim or they're not-
They're, they're pretty well worn. And, you know, I mean, I still think we should go to Williston and, you know, email Chuck McCullough and be like, hey, how about we put in one of those solar things where if you want, you press the little button and it's, it's just a sign, it's not the ones that go in.
Your students use to go up to the fields all the time.
That's the most dangerous part.
And that's it. One thing that I have noticed, which is really good, you probably noticed the same thing, the students from Williston, when they go up there, they go in a group usually. And when they cross, they cross in a group. It's not running one across the street. You get a whole group and usually a counselor's out there and will stand in the road until everybody gets across, and I've seen that.
Yeah, that's good.
And then that's really good. You don't get the one or two individuals that go up there running, you know, in the group trying to cross. And again, we had over the course of about 15 shifts, we only had 289 cars.
It's not, it's not a huge amount of traffic, which I think maybe is like, the neighbors, when they see a car, they're, whoop, I haven't seen one of these in a while, like how fast it's going.
He's going to be going fast.
Exactly.
So I suppose 44 was the top, top speed.
And you know, and the majority of all these, the officers weren't unmarked cars with a radio-
So it's not like they-
And pulled off to the side of the road. So nobody even knew that we were there, so there was no opportunity to flashlights to tell people to slow down. And for the majority of the time, they were parked right in the middle, near that Hisgin Avenue. I just make sure the car gets up to full speed, hit them with the radar gun, and they had one at 44. That was it, that was the fastest speed.
With cell phones and social media, you can't be out there more than a half hour anyway.
Oh, yeah.
The word spreads.
Yeah, right?
The word spreads.
All right, well, I appreciate the time, guys.
Yeah, okay, so we're just going to continue this public hearing, or, wait, we'll continue this topic until October, so I'll just have to ask-
All the neighbors were emailing.
Salem, do you need the, do you need that?
I have, I have the, oh, probably not this one, no. I don't have that one, but we'll take it.
You can take this one, just make me a copy and bring it to the next meeting. Oh, you have it next?
That's the one for you guys, yeah, yeah. I only had two, I gave Salem one and you have one to share.
Oh man, I was in the middle. Why don't you get my TV? As chair, I'm going to go back and-
Salem as chair, I'll give it to you.
There must be some-
There's your perk.
Oh, I did, I got it up, I just have to plug everything in.
We're going to put it in barbs. We'll put it in master, make sure for you and Joe.
Okay, so we'll continue that one, yeah.
Take it away, Chief. Any info, you can get us on, I think we can rectify it.
So the last one, and I thought this owner may have been, the person may have been here tonight as well, but I guess not, as we had already discussed this, I think, a little bit, it was about the parking on High Street area, intersection, and I know, I think, both Council Hagan and I had went by there. We never experienced that problem either.
I did the first time today.
Oh, good.
And I'm going to pressure right now. Google Earth, satellite imagery.
And it's there on Google Earth?
No, it's not there actually. Today, August 13th, at 10:04 AM, there was a construction van doing work at 68, 68 High Street. He was parked-
That's that little house.
Legally right here. This is a house here, where the complaint came from is right here. He has actually two ways of accessing egress. He can come down and go out Union Court, which brings him out onto Union Street, and again, complete vision is going to be blocked here, or he can go through a private parking lot. This here is the senior center, that's city, this is a private parking lot right here. He comes out, he goes down, he comes over. Now with that van there, and I took it down, it was a Chevrolet Express cargo van, full size, no windows, it was a work van. He was parked in this spot right here. I pulled up, this parking lot was completely full, I stopped one car shy, I had complete visibility all the way over Campus Lane, complete visibility over Union Street, and you can see all the way down High Street. So coming up to that van, no, I cannot see immediately at that van, but if you stop just short of it, you can easily come out, pull around. If there were a box truck in this end space in the parking lot, the private parking lot, it'd be much harder to see, much harder to see. But the only vehicle that I've seen parked there, and it was a Biggie's truck, and I know that Biggie's owns this particular lot, it's there for a minimum amount of time, and again, I could not find it there. I went by one time, I saw it there, by the time I turned around to come through, it was already gone. So I had a van here doing work and I really did not have an issue getting out of that parking lot at all. And my other concern is, if this becomes no parking and this is a private parking lot right here, there are barricades that come up. My concern is that he could easily close that off. And then his only access and egress is through Union Court in the alley, which is really an issue.
And then you come out on the sidewalk.
If you come over onto Main Street and you park in front of any one of the storefronts and you're parked next to a pickup truck, a van, or a box truck, you have much less, much less view.
Yeah.
Much less view.
That's always hard coming out.
The street is already no parking on the senior center side, all the way down to this first space. It's no parking, the entire north side, the entire street. The only place that you have parking is from this house on the south side, all the way down to the Chapman Avenue intersection, and then it becomes no parking again.
You can't go up or down.
Down, great. So these are the only parking spaces really for this particular street. I honestly, I don't see a need to restrict that.
Okay.
As I said, I went by, I know we've talked, the only time I believe I saw one car one time, and a car wasn't-
Would you like this for-
Sure.
Absolutely.
There was one car and there wasn't, a car wasn't a visible, visibility at all. I never saw the truck, I went through it every time, now I don't go quite as much with the detours over the bridge.
Right, right.
But, you know, before it was up, I was going by quite a bit and I'd always look.
And you never see it. See, I saw it that one time and I made a quick turnaround, I saw, there it is, but the time I got there, it was already gone.
So he was requesting a no parking, is that what he was?
He wanted no parking in front of that 6 High.
Yeah.
Okay. Which as you said then, that may very well, since it's a Biggie's van, it may end up closing it off as to a private lot, which would then make his access-
Does Biggie's hold the lot, do you know, or?
I believe that, that lot right here-
I know you said kind of this back there.
My belief is that whole lot and that one lot, one lot I believe is owned by the city, but that's the back one.
This one?
The other lot, the small one, yes, the small lot in the front right here.
This little one here?
This one right here, this, right here, you can see, there's a little barrier right here.
And you're kind of-
It would be this, this, and this. This is privately owned and my belief is that 68 High Street owned that lot. And this is city lot, as is this.
Yeah, I think Biggie's must own that because you see their employees-
Yeah, it's got to be employees because it's almost all the time, there's cars in there, you know, where the door's open, so I can't say, you know-
The tenants to 68 High also park there on a regular basis, they're always in that lot, so, you know, I didn't check with Mike over at Biggie's to see if they did, but I'm assuming that they do. I don't know of anybody else that would. And you're right, you always see Biggie's employees park there, and that's where they're instructed to park, so they must own that.
Okay, so I think that's, vetted that one out pretty well. So again, I think probably I would be in favor of Council Hagan would to remove this also with that prejudiced-
Yeah, absolutely. We'll remove this request for no parking in front of 6 High Street from the city council agenda without prejudice.
Okay, second, I'll second it, and all those in favor, I oppose. Motion passed, it's two to zero, okay. Okay, terrific, so I guess-
Now again, give us the option if for some reason things change or some variation. I always bring it back up.
Sure. Whenever I look at anything, whenever you put parking requests or any type of stop sign, first thing that I do is I pull up statistics, how many accidents were at that location? The next thing you do is, okay, how many citations have been issued? And then if you really need to have guys go down there and do a speed study, do a speed study so I can find out what the actual speed is. And it helps me in my determination, you know, coming into this, really had no opinion on the, the stop sign issue, although personally, I didn't care for four-way stop. After I printed up this thing for the Department of Transportation and I read it, I went, that's not such a good idea.
Although it's interesting because that is, most of those areas have been static for a long time. This is now, has been reconfigured, so it'll be interesting if it changes, at least pedestrian traffic changes.
And even the way kids access the high school, I don't know how exactly, I think it's going to be more to the back.
It's going to be, it's going to be actually when they open-
Or they all going to really-
It'll be Williston Avenue will get-
Right into where the old high school is.
Right, it'll be, when they get done, the main entrance will still be the main entrance and it'll bring them right into, and funnel them right into the lot. And anybody else would probably use Bryant Avenue. So I think you're going to see when school opens, fewer cars going down Garfield.
How about buses, they going to come out from straight or are they going to go around? I think they're going to pull up in front of the school, I'm just not sure if they're going to come straight out and-
You know, I haven't, I don't think, I don't know if they figured, obviously they had to figure it out, but I, we haven't been told how, what they're going to do. I would assume they probably go around to the back because they do have a drop off.
Right, once they put that-
And they can drop them off and then, and come right out.
The way it was when it first opened, you can't really tell because they're-
Right.
You know, the parking lot isn't theirs, so I don't know how they're, I'm sure that, as you said, there's some sure which claims.
Exactly.
So that's a good thing, you know, to see the traffic patterns.
So is it okay if we leave it that sometime in late September, you'll just send us some new recommendations?
Kind of an upgrade, an update on, on information on what you found.
That's fine, that's fine. What I'll have the officers do is I'll have them go out there again and do like a 10-day thing and run some radar and monitor the intersection.